All right, good evening, everybody. We're gonna, I'm gonna call this board meeting to order. Tonight is Tuesday, January ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Time is seven oh four. For everyone to understand, I am opening this meeting because in a few minutes, our Board of Education will organize. And up until that point in time, the Board of Education policy has the superintendent set to run the meeting until the board makes that organization. So with that, we're gonna go ahead and have roll call. Jamie?
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Here.
Mr. Hatt.
Here.
Mrs. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Van Machenova.
Here.
Mrs. Vincent.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Here. Thank you very much if we may stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So for revisions and approval of the agenda, we will be removing new business B superintendent goals along with new business C first reading of board policies. There are no other revisions and or additions to the agenda tonight.
Tell me that again?
Remove new business B superintendent goals and remove new business C first reading of board policies.
Thank you.
I'll move that the agenda be adopted with those two items tracked it or eliminated.
I'll support.
All right, motion of support, any discussion? Hearing none. Jamie, roll call, please.
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Hatt.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Machenova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes. All right, so our first two superintendents comments tonight are that we have students from both Arborwood and from Manor here to present. And we're gonna start with Arborwood because we're gonna go alphabetical order. So Holly, you wanna step up? Are you guys going together or separate? Are you together? Okay, Holly and Laura come forward. And all of our students. So welcome. We're thrilled to have you here tonight. So I believe the microphone is right there, so be sure to pick it up so we can hear your voices clearly.
All right, we'll introduce ourselves. I'm Holly Moore. I'm one of the co-principals at Arborwood.
My name is Jocelyn.
My name is Debru Sete Baratna.
My name is Angel Watkins.
And my name is Emma Taylor.
I'm Laura Lavender, the other co-principal.
And our wonderful students have put together a presentation that they are going to share. They have worked really hard on this and we're super proud. Who's going first?
Mentors at Arborwood. We have many mentors at Arborwood Elementary. Example, Ms. Maya, Ms. Riley, Mr. Jason, Ms. T. We have many mentors at school that help us a lot. They help kids if they don't understand work or they take them for social emotional breaks like having some hard times with a student or subject, et cetera. Some also chaperon our field trips, do lunch groups, and even lead a musical theater group. We are so lucky. A picture of Ms. Maya, Ms. Riley, Mrs. T, and Mr. Jason. Why do we have mentors? We have mentors because they help us with work and they help make us think positively about ourselves. They are great mentors because they give us affirmations and support us if we have personal problems. Central calming corners. The Eagles Nest is our school's main calming corner for kids that need to calm their brains. This can be from learning or if kids are trouble and need to reset. There are staff members, games, toys, posters, and more there to take a break with. After their break, their brain should be set and ready to work. Calming corners in our classrooms. There are moments in the classrooms where kids are stressed and angry on occasions where kids can't go to the Eagles Nest. At Arborwood, there are calming corners available for kids in each of our classrooms who need a little break. There are posters and toys that could ease nerves and let you be able to calm down and be ready to learn in class. Here are some examples of calming corners in classrooms. As you could see in one example, there are fidget toys and coloring pencils. And in some other examples, there are posters and comfy settings for you to ease nerves in.
How students feel about the peer-to-peer rubric? As a school, we feel that there are some improvements in students' actions towards each other. Also, students have been taking the rubric more serious and trying to get their friends to as well. In addition, students have been checking the rubric more often to see how things can be resolved. We even played Rubric Jeopardy to become more familiar. Bystander. An increase in more students being a good bystander. In addition, they have also been standing up for other students and keeping them away from situations that aren't the best for them. Thank you for teaching us, Dr. McAvoy. Start quote, "Using power the right way makes you a leader," end quote by Dr. McAvoy.
Opportunities at Arborwood campus. We have so many special opportunities here at Arborwood. For example, our science lab. We have gotten so much new knowledge from the lab, like the tectonic plates unit and many more fun experiments. Another special tool here is our classroom buddies. The buddies give us a safe space for when we are upset with another student. They can help us resolve the problem and calm us down so that we are ready to go back to class. Links. Links is a peer-to-peer program where we partner with students from the ISD. We participate in encore together. Friendships are key in the Links program. To create those friendships with each other, we play outside, have parties for special occasions, and do multiple different crafts with our friends in our Links program.
We have so many awesome opportunities at Arborwood. We love being an Eagle. Thank you for listening to our presentation.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions? No, I just wanted to ask if you guys have any questions. We're really proud of our work that we're doing with the peer-to-peer. I do just wanna give this one statistic that so far within the past three months, we have our positive teacher-to-student interactions is at ninety-five percent and that we have celebrated, the teachers have celebrated our students twenty-three thousand forty-five times.
Wow. Great job. Yes, we are, we are thrilled those positive reaction students. Great job. I truly appreciate it. And way to go Arborwood. All right, Manor, you're up next.
Arborwood, you did fantastic job.
Hi, I'm Brittany Thailand. I'm the principal at Manor Elementary. We have these lovely ladies here that worked really hard on our presentation. Everything was totally done by them. They have complete ownership of it, and I will let them introduce themselves to you.
Hi, I'm Haven Cupp and I'm in the fifth grade.
Hi, I'm Everly Hayden and I'm in fifth grade.
Hi, I'm Jalen Benison. I'm in sixth grade.
Hi, my name's Lily Johnson. I'm in sixth grade. So me and Haven are the actual ones on the Student Board of Delegates, but we picked some of our, like, closest friends to help us represent our school here tonight.
Today, we're gonna be teaching you about what our school has improved on, why we're a leader in me school, and how we maintain being a leader in me school.
Number one, what our school has improved on. The peer-to-peer mistreatment rubric has helped our school by taking situations very serious and helping students feel heard and helped. Number two, the PB, the PBIS expectations. This has helped to maintain good etiquette in hallways, bathrooms, and even on the playground. This has ensured safety for little kids and older kids.
Why we are a leader in me school. In this school, we believe that everyone, every age, has the potential to be a leader. Being a leader in me school, we hope to empower students in the classroom by talking about the seven habits and how we can use them daily. How we maintain to be a leader in me school. We maintain being a leader in me school by our student-led assemblies, which are led by the student lighthouse team. We have student jobs so students can contribute. We do this so students can take part and have responsibility in the school community. Each classroom has a buddy classroom, which helps have a role model to rely on. The student lighthouse team helps make important decisions about our school.
You might be thinking, how could this improve us leaders in the long run? Because many students will follow into the footprints of leaders left before. Most students carry these habits with them into adult life. With these daily lessons, it can help communicate, communication skills for the future. This, the leader in me eliminates negative student behavior and builds up student strength.
The seven habits. We asked staff members what they thought the three most important habits were. This is what they thought were important. Number one, seek first to understand then to be understood. This is the habit of listening to others' ideas and trying to see from another viewpoint. Number two, put first things first. This habit means organizing and executing around your most important priorities. And number three is begin with the end in mind. This means to begin every day, every task, and every pro, or project with a clear vision of your desired directions and destination.
All right, that concludes our presentation. If you have any questions, ask away.
So this is put together by the students? Wow, great job.
Lily Johnson is all about the aesthetics, so. So she is, she is really, really in tune with her PowerPoint skills.
Okay. Well, thank you so very much, Manor. Great job, students. Appreciate it. Brittany, we appreciate it. So parents, thank you for coming tonight. You're more than welcome to stay, but you don't have to. We do, we'll get a picture of you out in the hall, so I know Wendy's gonna take you out there. So students, if you wanna head out with Wendy, she'll hook you up. Thank you all so very much for attending tonight. Next on the agenda is public commentary, and this is for board agenda items only. And we do have one, and that's Yvonne, who does have a public comment right there. Holly, you wanna take the lead on this, please? You can. You still can. Because you know what you're doing there.
Yvonne?
I was just going through the agenda, and I saw that we're buying literature books for the high school. I was just curious. I know books are expensive. How many books are we getting for, what is it, fifty-four thousand dollars?
I'm gonna answer that. So in a few minutes, we're actually gonna answer that question for you because there'll be a presentation.
Good, good, good.
So you'll know that answer soon.
And I have another question that I forgot to write, and it's not on the agenda, so later.
Perfect.
Thank you, Yvonne.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, so next on the agenda is the election of the temporary chairperson. Per board policy, at this point in time, Board of Education will nominate and then elect a temporary chairperson. And so we're looking for a nomination of that temporary chairperson.
Mr. President or whatever not. I would move that we renominate all the existing officers to the current position for the coming year. And we can cut through that chase there.
I second that.
So we have a motion on the floor to keep all positions the same with support. At this point in time, we'll honor discussion by the board.
I mean, I think we're doing a fairly decent job getting along, getting our opinions expressed, et cetera. I think we're going in the right direction. Let's keep it going.
Any other discussions?
I concur.
Okay. All right, I'm hearing no other discussions. Jamie, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
I'll support that.
Mr. Hatt.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Machenova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
No.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Uh, yes. So the motion is passed to keep the elected officers in the slate the same as the twenty-three year. So at this point in time, we'll turn the meeting over to President Zimmerman. And that takes us to what page? All the way down to page five, Establishment of Dates, Times, and Location of Board of Education Meetings.
I think we need to do number seven. The ISD.
Oh, I'm sorry. The election of the board liaison.
Liaison officer.
Yeah, I was not able to make that meeting, but I will, I will gladly do that.
Well, I was gonna move to nominate Tom Hatt into the position of the School Board Liaison Representative to the ISD for the twenty-twenty-four calendar year.
Could we have Tom and Scott just in case they can't?
I'll support Tom if he wants to do it.
All right, I'll support you. You wanna do it, Tom? Sure.
All right, so Tom is, all right. Nope, I appreciate it. Any more discussion? Can we have a roll call, please, Jamie?
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Absolutely.
This, this is scaring me.
It's not a big deal.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Machenova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. Uh, that brings us to number eight, Establish Dates, Times, and Locations of Board Meetings.
I would move that we continue to keep the board and the work sessions as they are for the current year into the new year.
I support.
Any discussion?
So in that motion, are you saying that we are keeping the Monday night committee meetings? Or is that not included?
That won't be part of our
Okay.
dates, but we could put those in at some point if Andy wanted them or Larry wanted them.
Okay. And then earlier in our work session, we were chatting about reserving the second Monday. Would that just be something that we put on the calendar as an as-needed basis, not a regularly scheduled meeting then?
Yeah, what I'm going to do is I'm gonna put it on each one of my Mondays or second Mondays. If it comes about, fine. If it doesn't come about.
Right, but it wouldn't be like on the official calendar. Okay, thank you.
I think we need to make sure that we're saying we're gonna start at five o'clock for the work sessions.
Well, I don't know.
No, we changed that.
We changed that to five thirty.
It was too difficult for.
Back to five thirty.
Okay. There's a couple people that have a problem.
That's fine.
That's why.
I'd like everybody to be here on the work session if we can. So I mean, I don't want to be a barrier.
That's the whole reason we didn't wanna do the whole committee meeting. It became a waste of time. Can we have a roll call, please, Jamie?
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Hatt.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Machenova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. Acceptance of Reports. Let's see. Is there anything we need to discuss on that? All right, that brings us to, because we don't have to vote on those, right?
No, we don't.
I don't think so. That brings us to Consent Agenda Items. Uh, let's see. Are there any items that board members would like to be moved off the consent agenda item and moved over to new business?
I would just like to take off on G.
Yep, it's page nine.
Nine.
It'll be B, did you say?
Yeah, B, as a matter of fact, more specifically, B. I guess it doesn't have a
Yeah, it does.
Corporate resolution issued for.
Well, the first reading is what you wanted off, correct?
Yeah, let's take off. Corporate resolution, facsimile signature.
That's not.
What's the letters?
That's not part of it. Oh, it's not?
It's not.
No, it was superintendent goals.
Well, I have ten. I have ten and under ten I have A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H,
I, J. And what would you like removed?
I was gonna take off G.
G?
G.
Which is the first reading of the board policies?
No, no.
No.
This one right here.
Corporate resolutions and facsimile signatures.
Yeah. G.
Yes.
Here, Larry. Right here.
That's what we're putting a move on, the consent agenda currently.
Taking this off?
Yeah, and then everything else is consent agenda.
If you're looking for support, I'll support that.
Okay.
Any discussion? So just G? Okay. No, wait a minute.
Wait, what are we taking off?
Just G.
Sorry, can I just clarify that we're taking that from consent to new business?
Well, it'd be off the consent agenda now. I would assume at some point somebody's gonna make a motion either to.
Okay.
Whatever not.
Okay, so we're just taking off G?
Right.
All right.
Then I would move to have consent agenda items be to A through J. Let alone G. Or consider using consent agenda and consent agenda item be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Support. Support, sorry.
Could we have this, uh, could we have a roll call, please, Jamie?
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Hatt.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Machenova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. And that brings us to new business, correct?
Nope, you're gonna automatically go to G.
Okay, we're going to G.
I just had a question really for Cassie. On MYLAF, do we, how much money do we have there? Do we have, was it twelve million or do we have less than that?
Um, hear the question.
Oh, MYLAF. My question really dealt with, uh,
How much money is left?
Page eight.
I provided the board a report of where we were at with expenditures and revenues in board briefs last week for the bond fund.
I think we're about twelve million. Is that still around the same or?
After we take into account all the current contracts that we have projected out, there's about nine million that hasn't been allocated yet. Now, keep in mind, Kohler's Architecture will take up some of that as we don't have a contracted amount with them. It's based on the services they render.
Ten percent, right?
It, it bases on the services they render for those projects.
And does that, and we anticipate that that will be the last year for MYLAF then? Or do we have one more year after this?
We have MYLAF until we're done with the, the bond projects.
What were, what do they have to manage then?
There's still funds in our managed account that have not been moved over to the, the MAX class.
How much?
We have four different accounts. I don't know off the top of my head what's in each individual account. Because when we invest, when we placed the Series One issuance funds with MYLAF, there was a draw schedule that was developed, and they invested in long-term investments in alignment with that draw schedule. Now, that first series is coming to a close, but there is still some funds in that account that they are managing. The Series Two proceeds were just placed in the MAX class, which is not the managed account. So those are just receiving interest based on the pool.
Would they need withdrawals, signatures, and casing, or I mean?
What, what do you mean a withdrawal signature?
We're asking for their, uh, we can do their signatures by fax, et cetera. Is there anything actually for them to?
Well, they have us scan our plan documents to them when, for instance, we had a staff member that left the business office that had access to the accounts. And the new person, we submit by scan those documents. So it's saying that they can accept a scanned or faxed signature. It doesn't have to be the original document.
Because I couldn't think what they would need our signatures for. Okay. All right.
And then, um, I'm trying to think what else we would scan to them with the.
The draws, I mean, there's really.
Those are all checks that we issue. There's nothing drawn out of it that isn't a check.
So is it they need to have, maybe if we have eight people off our accounts. And at that point, I would.
Can you catch me up? So is this something new?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
This is an annual document that the board has to approve each year.
That's how we authorize signatures to take place. I didn't know, I couldn't think of anything that we need MYLAF signatures for or our signature for.
Okay.
I get Cassie's got one here, so I didn't.
So you just.
Still learning.
Yeah, I just need clarification because I couldn't think why we would need them. For that. Yeah. So I would then move that we adopt corporate resolution, facsimile, or facsimile signatures for MYLAF as well, which is item G on our agenda.
Is there support?
As well as, well, since I took them all off, as well as all the other ones.
Okay. Is there support?
Yeah.
I'll support that. Any discussion? We have a roll call, please, Jamie.
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Hatt.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Machenova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. That brings us to staff recommendations. Cindy Flynn, do we have our new highries here?
Um, we do not have a new highries here, but we have tenure.
Okay.
Oh, great.
Does this show her one more line?
We have.
We're not up yet.
We gotta approve them in a few minutes.
Okay.
The tenure ones we'll be approving.
Okay, no, none of our news. None of our newbies.
Okay.
But I was excited to get your briefing.
Yeah.
We need to do a couple of minutes.
Okay. No, it's part of the.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
So that brings us to the Family Medical Center Mentorendum, Mentor, ooh, of Understanding. Get my mouth is not gonna put that out. Can we get a motion?
Um, I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between Monroe Public Schools and the Family Medical Center of Michigan Incorporated as presented.
Is there support?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have somewhat of a conflict. I have some relationship with family medical, so I'm gonna abstain if that's okay with everybody.
Yeah, that's okay.
We, we have, um, there was a presentation on this, if I correct, at the last one. But to go over the memorandum, I still have a lot of, um, um, concerns because it still includes medical, dental, and behavioral within the contract that can all be subcontracted out. That's a lot of latitude that we are just handing over to an organization. I know the one thing I did ask for was data on what their successes have been because it's, we're not just putting it into, including the contract for all buildings. The contract now installs these services in all the buildings that isn't currently in those buildings because we asked that question. That was a specific question I asked. So I just wanna be clear that what we're doing is not just saying, okay, we're gonna do one contract that's, that now is all-inclusive. No, what we're voting on is to put these services, and that includes medical, dental, and behavioral, as according to this policy, including third-party subcontract out into all, I think the wording is, all district, district buildings. I think that's how it's worded. I'd have to correct myself on that. We already have pro-medical clinic. I thought medical was already addressed. It talks about doing immunizations, and I think that requires a bigger conversation than putting into a contract. So I have a lot of concerns about this contract. I, I think that we should probably vet it a bit more. And that's my comment.
Anyone else? Okay, roll call, please, Jamie.
Yes, Mrs. Williams. Yes, Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachtenova.
I'm gonna abstain.
Mrs. Myers.
No.
Mr. Huck.
No.
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes. I believe the motion passed?
That was four.
Yeah, four, okay. That brings us to the second reading and adoption of board policy, Mr. Shaw.
So, uh, at our last board meeting, the board vacation read first policies, uh, and those policies were student technology, acceptable use, and safety. That was policy seventy-five forty point oh three, and then policy seventy-five forty point oh four was staff technology, acceptable use, and safety. Eighty-three oh five, information security, and eighty-three fifteen, informational management. These were all the first reading at our last, uh, board meeting, and so tonight they are up for a second reading, which makes them, if the board so desires and approves them, to then go into, uh, into policy after this appointment.
Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the following policies effective January ninth, twenty twenty-four, seven five zero four zero point oh three, seven five four zero point oh four, eight three zero five, and eight three one five.
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none, could we have a roll call, please, Jamie?
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Huck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachtenova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes. That brings us to coach resolution, Flynn.
Thank you, President Zimmerman, tonight we're asking the board to move to approve the above-named coach for the twenty twenty-three twenty-four school year as per the MCEA master agreements.
Can we get a motion?
Yes, I moved to approve Lisa Kohler, uh, as a coach for the twenty-three twenty-four year per the master agreement.
Support?
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none, could we have a roll call, please, Jamie?
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Huck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachtenova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. That brings us to tenure recommendation, Cindy Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman, um, tonight we're asking the board to move to confirm and endorse the granting of tenure and removal from probation for David Mahoney, Laura DeGasto, Bethany Davis, and Diana Hoffman on the appropriate anniversary dates, and three of our candidates are in the audience.
Can I get a motion?
I'll move that we approve tenure for this.
Support?
Support.
Any discussion?
Yeah, we did.
Well, of course. We have a roll call, please, Jamie.
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Huck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachtenova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes.
All right, if we could have the three candidates, if you could please come up to the podium, introduce yourself, and you'll come around just like you did when you were hired, if you had that opportunity. I don't know if you, come on up here, come on Bethany, you can go first.
You gotta tell us.
Yeah, tell us your story, where you are, what you, what grade you're teaching. Okay, go. You're good, go.
Okay, I teach fifty-six.
At.
Excuse me, I'm in sweatpants.
At Arborwood.
Arborwood.
Congratulations, my dear.
Welcome.
Yes.
Watch your step. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Way to go.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Bethany.
All right, Diana.
I'm Diana Hoffman, I'm also at Arborwood, I have kindergarten, and I've been in the district for a while and many positions, my family have kindergarten classes.
Well, congratulations, all right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Thanks for sticking around.
Watch your step.
And Laura.
Hello, my name is Laura DeGasto, uh, I currently teach kindergarten at Arborwood South Elementary School, and I, um, have had a wonderful opportunity to be able to teach in some of the other schools as far as Custer, um, I've also taught a little bit, um, sorry, I'm a little nervous and trying to think.
Virtual?
Yes, virtual program, uh, I started off at a middle school, and so I absolutely love, uh, the opportunity to be able to work at school eleven, or in Collin Moore, and, um, have great uh, the people, the staff is just wonderful, Monroe Public Schools, I feel very blessed to be able to have this opportunity, and, um, thank you.
Well, thank you.
I'm around.
Yes, I do also.
Oh, okay.
And I'm going into year four of the program.
Oh. All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Oh, your candidate's here, Laura.
Watch that step.
Proud mother.
Thank you.
All about watching step.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Laura, proud mother moment. Yes, they do.
A big congratulations to our four, I do remember, uh, way back in the day when I received tenure, and that is a wonderful moment, uh, of validation only by your Board of Education, uh, but also by the state of Michigan too, and so congratulations to the three of you, and actually all four, uh, on the granting of tenure.
All right, that brings us to vending machine purchase, Ms. Shaw.
Thank you, President Zimmerman, tonight we are asking the board to move to approve the purchase of the Evoque Ambient five thousand kiosk and the Summit five hundred kiosk at a cost not to exceed twenty-two thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars from Vengeukation LLC of Mount Vernon, Washington, the total cost of this purchase will come from the Food Service Fund.
Can we get a motion?
I'll move that we approve the vending machine purchase.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion?
I have to say, I had to educate myself on this, cause I didn't really know what meal magic was, and then, um, the whole vending machine process, so I gained an education today that I don't know what I'm gonna use for, but.
Well, you have it.
Yeah, my, my, my question is, on these vending machines, are they the ones that are gonna provide more substance food? Or are they going to, cause I know we talked, they talked about replacing some out the high school.
So these are the ones to replace in the commons at the high school, those actually, uh, recently broke down, and, um, originally I was gonna bring this next month, but since they broke down, I decided to add it on for this month. But, um, those are operated by the Food Service Department, and they do have to meet the USDA, uh, nutrition guidelines, so they would be the smart snacks that are a healthier option, um, and to provide students with additional snacks and things that they can purchase on their.
It's not the food items, cause I, in my research, I saw that there's actual vending machines for food, that's why I was wondering.
There's one, one of these is for, uh, drinks and one is for food items.
Okay.
And both instances, because it is operated by the Food Service Fund and will be available during mealtimes, I believe, as you can, you know, for sure, um, it has to meet the USDA guidelines, so it would have to be healthy snack options and healthy drink options.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call, please, Jamie.
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Huck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. That brings us to the CT switch lab purchase, Mr. Melanopsi.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, we ask the board to move to approve the purchase of a new switch lab electric vehicle training system from Toolkit Technologies at a cost not to exceed eighty-one thousand five hundred forty-four dollars. This purchase will be funded with a combination of the sixty-one C CTE equipment grant funds and sixty-one A CTE added cost grant funds.
Can I get a motion?
Yes, um, I move that we approve the, um, uh, cost not to exceed a eighty-one thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars for the switch lab, um, toolkit technology, uh, project.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion?
I just wanna thank Leah, I had several questions on this that she was very prompt to, uh, respond to, I think this is a great purchase, puts us ahead of the curve, um, with, you know, certainly the hybrid electric vehicle technology getting out there, hopefully we can maybe partner or work with some of the local dealerships with the kids who go through this training.
Leah, do you know how many students will be able to take advantage of this?
Depends on how they decide to, um, if the students, how he decides to use it in his instruction, they do afford a training more of a summer on how others, how other schools are using it, and they use it in multiple ways, but the thing about this, um, vehicle is it's all reusable, so they assemble it in one year, take it apart, reassemble it, and if they even send pair of those, you know, things that were break or whatever in the process for five years is included in the package, so the number of students, how Mr. Zmorski decides to set the curriculum up, we're not sure if he's gonna do a route for a semester, build it, take it down, have a different route second semester, multiple hours, and then do the services advanced, students, that's still kind of in the works. But every student in the automotive shop will have access to, um, have their hands on it throughout the school year timeframe.
How sophisticated does it get, I mean, I, I read your stuff, but I mean, yeah, to me, I mean, that's pretty sophisticated.
You're gonna say, let me tell you, I work on those things, it gets really sophisticated.
But I mean, students won't be able to start.
They do, I think.
I mean.
I got my shell.
There's gonna be what, like, uh, beginning?
So it comes as, I guess to see this and get in it, get pictures and stuff in it, when we were out at national conference this year, the second year we seen it, and we've been researching how best to try to bring this technology into the classroom, but if you can imagine like a, a large dune buggy, it's like the platform with the roll bars and stuff on it and the seats, that's all that it comes standard with, and then they completely can build all of the components that we need.
But I mean, the freshman's not gonna be able to do that, right, is it, is it like a beginning, advanced, more? Really?
This is gonna be new technology for everyone, so, yeah, very few freshmen are, are out in the automotive, automotive really starts off like it's ten years old, right? So freshmen don't really have access to the auto lab anyway, just because seats are limited out there.
Okay.
Um, but any automotive student would be able to pick up this technology as far as, um, it's going to be brand new for anyone who's touching it, right? So no matter what they already know about gasoline engines, which is what they focus on out there, this will be achievable for any of them to be able to do.
I'd, I'd encourage you to go to, uh, Toolkit Technologies website, it gives you photos, it gives you great pictures, all of the capabilities, you know, this dune buggy includes lithium ion batteries, the electric motors, regenerative braking components, so it's, it's really just a microcosm of what they would see in a dealership.
Minus some amenities.
Only because I have a hybrid, it took them six weeks to put in, I think, like, our steering unit, so I'm thinking, hey, we can't have these freshman kids do that thinking, but.
Not nearly that sophisticated.
Well, yeah, okay, all right.
We have a roll call, please, Jamie.
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Huck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. The CT welder purchase, again, Mr. Melanopsi.
Mr. President, we ask the board to move to approve the purchase of a new multi-purpose, of new multi-purpose welders for all nineteen welding booths from Baker's Gas and Welding Supplies at a cost not to exceed two-hundred-sixty-five thousand five-hundred-sixty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents, this purchase will be funded with sixty-one C CTE funds.
Can we get a motion?
I move that we, um, approve the purchase of the multi-purpose welders for all nineteen welding booths from Baker's Gas and Welding at a cost not to exceed two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand five-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents.
Support?
I'll support.
Any discussion?
I have to ask a question. Are the booths being updated as well, cause I know when we were out there, those booths needed a little bit of help. Not that I'm asking to spend more money, but.
It has to be big basis, so the nice thing about, you know, seeing wells, no matter what booth, right, so, um, I didn't realize, Mr. Horn is very humble, he doesn't need this. And so when I was out there and they were in the middle of changing out, this was last year, in one of my observations, they were switching from stick welding to mid welding, and he was completely moving all of the welders, how to do three new ones, and I'm like, what, what's going on? Their, their welders are so old, they only do single process at a time right now, so to switch from stick to maybe, they, they have three different units that they have to use throughout the year, and I said, there's, is that what the college is using, I know that's not what industry is using right now, like, that's not what I'm seeing at trade shows, what's happening, so, um, these are all multi-purpose, so this horn welder will do the job of what, three of them, and he currently has.
Okay.
And he's very portable as far as they, you know, they plug in and unplug to get a room, and they are out a car that's on wheels, so, um, hopefully, in the future, we're working on a plan to redo the booths and the lighting and things out in that shop, maybe even the configuration of those booths and towards some tech centers that have some really beautiful setups, so we're dreaming big for the remodel of the whole space, but at least for right now, they'll have access to those, to those technologies.
It's awesome.
Anyone else?
It's gonna look like that in two weeks anyway.
Yeah. Could we have a roll call, please, Jamie?
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachtenova.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Huck.
Yes.
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, the motion carries. Monroe High School book purchase, Mr. Melanopsi.
Yes, a little background to the board, um, and, and those in the audience, um, during the pandemic, uh, many of the literature books, the student choice books that teachers had on their shelves, um, were not returned, uh, they were not recovered, and that's left our English teachers in a little bit of a predicament without, um, adequate reading material that is of interest of our student population, um, so that is what this book purchase will help address. Um, so we asked the board to move to approve the purchase of literature books for classroom shelves at Monroe High School from Amazon at a cost not to exceed fifty-four thousand dollar, fifty-four thousand nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. This purchase will be funded through Esser three funds, uh, there are over seventeen hundred titles, um, it makes it very difficult to count when you have ten or eleven English teachers all re-requesting the same books in box sets, um, but we are looking at, um, twenty-five hundred to three thousand books, so quite a few books to replenish those shelves.
Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of literature books not to exceed fifty-four thousand nine dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Support?
Support.
Any discussion?
I was hoping this would have been on the, uh, the work session, I still have some questions, I, I do appreciate that some of the, uh, books that I flagged were removed from the list, however, there's quite a few there that are still, I think, um, of concern to myself, uh, as far as their content, as well as, um, I'm concerned that at least, uh, a hundred and fifty of them are comic books, which I still don't understand why we're paying to, uh, have students read comic books, so those are my concerns, uh, I thought maybe we would be discussing that further later in the work session, but, uh, certainly open for discussion, further discussion on those books.
I, I concur with that because I, I didn't redo, um, the work that you had done, Tom, on the, um, sexual content books, because I knew you had that, but what I did look at is the, um, the review that you submitted on how you get books, you know, to this list, and I did randomly, I am sorry, I am one of those people that will really sit there for four or five hours and randomly choose books and look to see what they're about, and so I ended up, I ended up going through not the entire list, I just randomly chose, um, I skipped the comic book type things that I already knew what they were, I skipped some of the series books that I knew that there was a murder series or a horror series or whatever it was, but what the picture presented in, and I'd be more than happy to go through these books with you, is there is a lot of dark fantasy, there is a lot of books that take factual historical context and mix it with a, um, fantasy, um, component of it, that to a student that is learning about the world around them, how can they understand what is reality when it's mixed with fantasy? Um, I could, like I say, I don't know how much time you wanna spend on this, I have the list, uh, I have so much of that, um, the other thing was, is I did take the time to go through the, uh, paperwork that you submitted, and. And on, uh, number one was about representation and it said that the books are a representation of, and it was a bigger paragraph than that. So I, I'm trying to help understand how representation of rape, reliving that incest, abuse, murder, killing, a dark fantasy is a representation according to the category for which it's listed. I can't fit them in there, maybe someone else can. Number two was to gain a greater cultural awareness. Um, and it, I was trying to figure out what diverse cultures are being represented when we're reading horror series and we're reading books about serial killers and we're reading books about, one is literally about the success of a student drug dealer. And so I say, what cultural awareness are in those books? I, I'm not seeing it, I haven't read them. I, what I literally did, it says, if I was going to buy this book from Amazon, what does it tell me about the book? Um, critical thinking, um, where do critical thinking skills come in in comics books, murder stories, horror stories? Um, number seven was improvement in academics, performance, and all, the, the only word I wrote to that was, someone's gotta explain that.
Okay, well, could we take those seven and?
I have actually two more.
Well, let's just take the seven, that way we don't overwhelm David, if you would like to chime in on this.
So one of the things I'll pop in first is that justification of the books, that was with David and with our high school. And so, um, Mandy Bomia took the lead with our English department on it. And so when they created and went through the book selection, and this is why they were making the book selection.
Right.
Okay.
And that's what I understood it to be. So I was trying to apply those books that I looked at, the books that Tom looked at, and said, how do they fit in these categories? And I can't see it. And so either someone has to explain to me how we're talking about so much dark fantasy and so much killing. Like, when you feed a child's mind with darkness and killing and stuff like that, you kinda can understand why they may have a behavioral outcome to being put in that stuff. I, I don't get it.
Could I have number one, please?
So number one was, um, and I don't have it in front of me, Andy does. Was about representation. And so my question becomes, how does rape, reading about rape, incest, abuse, murder, killing, and dark fantasy fit the category for number one?
I am, I am not part of, um, the, the professionals in the high school who came up with this, this list. Um, but I believe those represent society and the experiences that some of these students are facing and these things are their reality.
So I can, I can appreciate that, but at the same time, there should be enough that is not in these categories. Like literally, I was hunting to find a book that I would, could cheerlead and it was literally rhetorical. Um, it was a book on rhetorical, um, language skills and how to become a rhetorical speaker. And that's, that's the book I found. And I was like, well, cool, there's two of those. But I can't really find anything in there that shows the goodness of life, that shows the, 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 the great, why we learn, why are you in an education system? You want, you, you want your mind to be broadened in so many different categories? And when it is so much darkness? Like, I would be more than happy to go through all these books and explain my points on these because I, I've, you can't tell me that four thousand students wanna read about rape, murder, and horror stories. I'm not gonna buy it.
No, if I could, I mean, is there any way we could take this off and put it? You're gonna have to tell me what. I think it shouldn't be at a workshop too. There's some concerns I had, I'm not, maybe it's concerned with everybody, and I've never voted against purchases, but this one I wanna.
We, we can postpone it certainly.
Postpone it?
Yeah. Postpone it to the next board meeting and then discuss.
Right, cause it'll have to be done.
There's already, as parliamentarian, there's already a motion on the table that has been seconded. So we need to address the original motion person, Mr. President.
So the.
So we, well. Wait, isn't this amendment to a motion?
So we need to vote on the motion that's on the floor and a new motion can be made. It was, the motion was to approve it, so we can put that to a vote since it was seconded. And then, um, we can go from there.
Could not the motion be rescinded because we've been down this road before?
We have been down.
And I, I don't, I wanna be cautious that we cannot vote on it again afterwards?
No, we, I think we clarified that, if, if, yeah.
If, if we pull this off and vote it down, we can absolutely bring it right back at the next meeting. Correct?
I didn't bring my Robert's rules.
That's what we.
I have my Robert's rules.
Okay.
As long as it's done within two weeks.
We, we can't table it, but I think we can postpone it.
I think we can postpone too.
I think you have, you, you have to address the original motion as it's made, since it's already been a seconded. And that's what we ran into before.
Robert's rules is only a guidance.
Oh, no, 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 I'm gonna go like this. I, I move to amend my motion.
Well.
I'm going to amend my motion that instead of approving this book purchase at this meeting, that this agenda item be put on our next work session and we discuss this at length and vote on it in a following board meeting.
Is there support?
Well, we have to clarify that motion. That motion is like fifteen steps long.
You have to support my amendment.
Is that okay because I made the motion?
Right, no, you have to, you have to amend your motion.
You have to amend the motion then.
And what if I don't want to?
You don't have to.
Then we can vote on it.
You don't have to amend your motion, Carrie.
I, I'm not gonna amend the motion.
Okay.
Okay. Jamie, give me a roll call.
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
I didn't say yes.
Mr. Hatt.
No.
Mrs. Myers.
No.
Mr. Van Washenova.
No.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes. And where does that bring us?
It passed.
All right. All right, that brings us down to the M S A B, the M S.
Oh, okay. I move that Mary L. Vincent run for region seven.
You gotta let me get it out of my mouth, Bert.
I'm so excited we never had anybody.
I support.
All right, well, there it is.
Well.
And actually what we're doing is for the M S, M A S B Board of Directors, we are calling for a nominee. Can I get a motion?
Uh, I would move that Mary L. Vincent run for region seven as a candidate for the M A S B Board of Directors.
Can I get support?
Support.
Roll call, please.
This is our first person that ever ran, Mary. Do you need campaign help?
Well, are we in discussion right now?
Yeah, we're in discussion now.
Okay, so, um, truth be told, um, I went to the annual leadership conference in late fall um, after completing some certifications and things there. Shortly following that, um, one of the current board of directors reached out to me and said, would you ever consider? Because there's going to be a vacancy in your region. And I said, what? So after, um, Don kind of explained some things to me about like, not just time obligations, but like what this role does. I said, I feel like it's important to have a voice from a district like Monroe Public Schools in a state level Board of Directors for an organization that then also provides guidance for school districts around the state. So now, please understand that if I am nominate, like if this nomination goes through, it doesn't mean that I get the position. It goes to an election, which the M A S B election would happen in February. And then we would find out in March if I was elected to that position on the Board of Directors.
Now, region seven's composed of.
Lots of really big school districts.
Runs all the way from Ingham County down here.
Oh, from Ingham?
Yeah, so it, it's a big geographic area.
So like East Lansing Public Schools, Ann Arbor Public Schools, I think Plymouth Canton is also in there. So like, some really large school districts are in our same area. And obviously I haven't like reached out to any of the other boards to say like, who are you nominating? But I would imagine that there would be other nominees, that there's, I don't think there's any way I would run unopposed.
Oh, I don't know.
What we've seen in the, what we've seen is generally there's, um, it's one seat that's open. And when I brought it to other boards, usually I see three, maybe four, uh, schools that have representation.
Do you need us to campaign for you?
So what we'll see is then in February, we brought to you then for your, this board of ed to then pass it's valid.
Do we have a roll call, Jamie?
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Hatt.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Dr. Van Washenova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes, and thank you.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, one hundred and fifty percent.
Wow, congratulations, Mary.
We'll see you guys. It's not a sure thing.
As we have no old business this evening, I will turn this over to Mr. Shaw for a second round of superintendent comments.
Okay, so I'm trying to get to them quickly here. Um, one of the first ones is, uh, congratulations on being into the weather season. Uh, this morning started out at approximately four forty-five to start thinking about what are we going to do with our, with today? Because this morning was one of those question mark mornings. And so we felt like, I mean, this morning we're, it was pins and needles because it's like, uh, it could, we could have the snow show, we could not. The killer was, it was going to show like right while our kids were driving. So I wanted you to share this because when, uh, early on here in these decisions is, uh, really comes down to our high school kids and their driving times because, uh, they haven't been on snow yet. And we have some kids that just, for example, got their license this last summer, so it's their first opportunity. So we were fortunate, uh, except for about six oh five this morning, my heart just sunk when also I'm listening to channel thirteen and Toledo Public is delayed and Savanian is delayed. I'm like, oh, gosh. We already had buses on the roads for twenty minutes at that point in time. But, you know, we'll see how it goes. Uh, we're getting into a weather pattern, you can already see it coming right here. And so, uh, we'll see how it all, it goes right there. Uh, but it was beautiful to see how everyone just got right into the role with what they need to do from Patty at transportation to Tim. And everything was in great shape there. Uh, January is Board Recognition Month and so we had our dinner tonight. At our next meeting, we will recognize the board more formally. Uh, but I do wanna say it is a privilege and honor to work alongside of all of you. And it is a challenging job when you think about the forty-seven hundred students and roughly eleven hundred, uh, employees through even contracted services that you represent, along with then each of the parents, guardians, aunts and uncles, grandparents. Did this math problem one time, you know, we impact on every, every single day approximately fifteen thousand people. When you think about the kids, the parents, and then their direct, uh, people that are in their lives. And so it's, it goes to say that it is a job that, um, you know, I, I appreciate that the work that you do. Calendar of reminders, tomorrow is a two hour late arrival and then we have no school on Monday, uh, for Dr. Martin Luther King Day. And then Winterfest is Friday night. So if you are bored and wanna come out to the high school for Winterfest, come on out this Friday. But pay attention though to the weather because you never know what could happen for Friday night. So we'll see right there. And then, um, last year, Tom and I had the fortune of judging at the Future Chef. And so that is coming back out. And so they have to, students have to submit their nominations, uh, and recipes on February sixth. And so then next spring, uh, it'll probably be March or April right there, we'll have, they'll have their cook, cooking. So you'll get an invite to come and take part like we did this past year in there. But that was a beautiful event that Sedexel puts on and, uh, and the kids, it was, it was a good time last year over at Custer and, and the, and the meals that the kids made. So excited for that to happen there. So that concludes my comments for this evening.
Carla, do we have public commentary on any topic? I believe, I know we got one.
Yvonne.
Does this work? I guess so. Okay, um.
I don't know, is, is it on?
Can you hear?
Yes.
Cannot.
We hired a new coach. I was just curious as to what sport she will be coaching.
We did just have.
Soccer, okay. Okay.
Is it? It's a bit of soccer.
Okay. Um, back when we voted to approve our million dollar football field, I thought I heard reports that maybe we'll look into the pool since our kids for a long time weren't even allowed to have a home meet. I believe they are now having home meets. Carrie, you have a son on the team? I have a ninth grader now, grandson on the team. And wonder if anything is going to be done to improve our pool? Or did we run out of money with the football field and that's the end of that?
Oh, I'll be calling you on that with that answer.
Okay, and I remember A.D. Ray had announced his retirement quite some time ago to give a heads up. Is he still working? Has he retired yet or what's the status there?
Yep, he's, he's retiring effective June thirtieth.
Oh, June, okay. So I assume the search will commence in the spring? Okay, let's see, what else? I was happy to hear about the E V training. I have a grandson who graduated in June. He didn't wanna go to college, but he did go out to the college a month or two ago when they had an apprenticeship thing. And he heard about the automotive training, so now he's looking to go there next fall. Hallelujah. And he was into welding. I'm sure he would have loved all this new machinery that's coming. And my final comment is I am very disappointed to hear, after hearing what Darla said is included in our reading list, that you didn't vote for some more discussion there. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne. Would you mind adding, well, do we need to add the topics on here? No, okay. That concludes public comments.
All right, that brings us to, is there any board commentary tonight?
Yes, may I, um, just ask some questions that maybe some people watching might not know the answers to? So because you mentioned we're going into weather season.
Yes.
What is the most effective way for families, students to get notification of delays and, and cancellations?
So delays, cancellations come out through a text message, it'll also come through their email. We post it on Facebook. The very first posting goes out is on Facebook, because it's when we get out the quickest. And then the call goes out immediately after. We try to have all calls made by five thirty in the morning, so it'll go out between five and five thirty.
Okay.
And if at all possible, we can make the decision the night before we do, because we know that has impact.
And then what Facebook page specifically? There's Wendy, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then, um, for families to sign up for text, email notifications, is that, is that information on the website?
Well, no, it's already part of.
It's already a part of registration?
What happens, yep.
If I can, it's what information they provide on their enrollment forms for their student. It's whatever's, it goes off of Power School.
Perfect, okay.
Just to add a caveat in there.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
All right.
Yeah.
I had a question. I know our, the change in the traffic pattern at Raisinville has been pretty successful. We discussed potentially doing something at Custer.
Yep.
Where do we stand on that?
So that was, uh, I've talked with, oh, let's talk about it today. Lewis is his name, we're down at the city hall, uh, working city, Pat Lewis. So Pat Lewis, and then we have a county person also, they're actually going to help us with kind of figuring out how to design that area. And so we've, I've just gotta get that time, sit down with them, go, okay, let's pull up the map and lay out which way. Our biggest challenge at, at Custer is trying to make it so that, um, students don't cross in front of buses and or cars. And so we have, that's one of our big challenges there.
It's a bad layout, as it is.
So, but we're gonna bring those two that understand traffic patterns and see if they can help us resolve and figure that out.
I will say, Raisinville did work out very well.
Yeah.
There's not a million cars.
I know, not as bad.
I do, Raisinville.
Well, it started at three o'clock.
Sometimes two forty-five, they start lining up. I believe you had something, Larry?
Yeah, a couple things. Uh, on the first vehicle contract, I know it called that, uh, if we had a reduction greater than five percent of our buses, that we would have renegotiations. I looked at the check registered, I don't see a reduction. You know, the status of that or?
I know Mr. Shaw was in conversations with them as far as.
July, no.
No, we had.
You sell the buses September?
Uh, no, it was juh, July or August.
I'm gonna say July, no, August.
And so I had, I'll look, I had, we had something on a board briefing, so let me pull that back up for you.
The thing is that if it's a fifty percent reduction, I mean, that's like seven thousand dollars a month that's spent in extra if that's the case. And we've been spending it for what, six months now?
Yeah, but you have to remember that that reduction is in vehicles that weren't moving down the road. And, and where, and buses that they weren't doing annual, uh, having to do a continual work. having to do continual work on, because it wasn't, they were the spares, some buses that.
That's not what the contract says. The contract says if we have reduction in the number of buses. It doesn't say what they are. I mean, I didn't write the contract. But, you know, we've been spending a lot of money for nothing. The second thing I had is that, I know we also had a bid for purchase of vehicles, I think some trucks, 130, some odd thousand, let's just add something to that.
A C.T. bus?
No, that's a different one, that one's going next.
Yep, so on those right there, those were put in board briefs, and if you want to speak to the operations.
We put that on hold.
I put it in hold, okay.
Because what we'd like to do is, I asked Tim to do a three- to six-year forecast of vehicle purchases, so we could combine this year with maybe next year's budget to make it, because the reason we did that is we weren't going to be able to get them until the end of February. So the immediate need for snow removal was gone, and that's the main reason we're getting them so soon. So we want to slow it down a little bit and get a little more details and forecast out a little bit.
That makes sense, thanks, David. I also note that on our purchase of diesel fuel, that seems to be going up while the number of vehicles going down and the price of diesel going down. I don't know about you, but I've purchased diesel, too, so. I rebid mine out, and I got like 25% reduction. I don't know if we should do that, or?
I don't handle the bid, the diesel purchasing, but I, we can definitely look into that, Patty and Tim, and, yeah, see.
Diesel's going down dramatically, gas is going down dramatically, our prices that we're paying are going up.
The prices vary based on the amount that we're filling into the tank.
I understand.
But I can look at the past couple of years to see what the fuel expenses have been.
If you could give me that, that'd be great, appreciate that.
I may not have it for this week's board briefs, but certainly in the next couple of weeks.
When would I get that, you think?
Hopefully by next week.
Next week, okay, I'll put that down.
Would be my best guess.
And then lastly.
Oh, sorry, Larry.
Yeah, I think last year, we talked about, on a fiscal resource committee, that, well, it used to be a fiscal resource committee. We was going to have priorities and have our architect come in, give us a list of one through five. I think that was to happen no later than October.
We were hoping for that. We actually have met with Kohler, we have one more meeting where he, because we, we've met, and so there's a one, two, three list that has been generated. So now what we need to do with Mark is get hard numbers for you next to those. So we're going to push him to get that done, and then we're going to schedule into a special work session, because it's going to take some time to go over that. But that is just about completed right there.
Do you know when we would have that?
We'll be able to get you a hard date from Mark on Tuesday when we meet with him.
We got the list of, like, they assessed the buildings. The problem now is, he needs some information from us due to pricing to focus. So we broke the list down by what we must do, what we have to do right now, what we need to do, and then what we want to do. So those ones and twos, those priority ones, we're going to make sure, because it's hard for us to do that until we have some pricing next to it. So we're going to get, we're meeting with him actually this Tuesday to narrow that focus a little more, so he can get us some general pricing.
I wonder if that would be something that maybe the Bork could participate in? Because one, two, and three, we used to have some input anyway. I mean, if it's a roof.
You will.
No, you will. You'll still have the ability to, if you look at a three and go, oh, you know, I think that, we believe as a group, that this should become a one. So be it, or that a two become a one, or a one become a two. We were just, we knew that to expedite work, that we needed to get it down to the ones and twos right there to get bids, or get more hard numbers to it. The threes probably won't have them, some may, because it's an extensive list. I mean, when we went through every single building, it was every little item.
I guess what we used to do, before we got the numbers, we used to prioritize items. Like you say, threes, we probably don't need prices, but I mean, we may consider your threes, our ones, or, you know, whatever the case may be. So I wonder if it may not be adaptive to have a conversation before then, get prices, and then.
Yeah, and just an example for a three might be like digital signs. We really want that, but when we look at roof and parking lot needs and mechanical and electrical updates, those always took the priority. Our problem is scheduling out five years, well, we might think this is a one and a two, well, we're already at $60 million, and we're in year four. So now we have to tone stuff back and get some more accurate pricing, because a lot of that pricing we had was pre the bond, and a lot of those numbers have inflated, and those escalation costs, and they're not accurate. So he wanted to, instead of spend six more months, he wanted to narrow down that list and maybe tackle 40 or 50% of that list, so we could do what you're saying, Larry. So we do want to do that, and we're not taking anything off the list.
I mean, I understand, you know, certain things like roofs have number one priorities, if that's the case, but I mean, there's things that which are not quite as clear-cut that we may, Fleming Pool, for example, we may say that's a one, somebody else may say that's a three. I think Mark's going to have to know that before he gives us prices as well. So those are the kinds of things I'm kind of worried about.
And these are just really broad, they're not, they're not going out to bid. They're just giving us some kind of number to help us. Because not only do we have to look at, is it a one or a two, but how do we fit that in the schedule with summer programs? And use the ability of actually executing the work.
So I think it's a two-step process, would be my opinion.
Anyone else?
Amaya. Tonight's a busy night. I just want to bring up that in the vote that we just did for the literature purchase, that was up for discussion in the Bork session that we just had, that we did not get to. And after this meeting, we are supposed to be covering anything that did not get discussed in that work board session. So my thought is that that would have went that direction, rather than get voted on before we got to do the work session on that list. So that's my take on that. I may have this wrong, but I got it wrong before, and I want to get it right. I think it's National Law Enforcement Day, is it? And I think we missed that for our resource officers last time. And I got the right day? Do I have the right day? Well, I just want to say, Happy National Law Enforcement Day.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Need to call my brother-in-law. Anyone else?
I did. I wrote down a little statement here. I was the one that did not rescind my original motion about the literature, and I just wanted to make a statement about that, that I truly have trust in the vetting process in place with our E.L.A. teachers and their department, their highly qualified staff. We've hired them to do the job, and I believe in them. In addition, I'm not fond of banning books for any reason. I don't like to deny individual autonomy. I believe it restricts growth for our students, and it prevents them from engaging in diverse viewpoints on important social issues.
And I will say, I agree with you, as far as the point of, we have people on staff that I trust their judgment.
I'd like to add.
I'm sorry, my no vote does not mean I don't trust their judgment. My no vote means that I think that as a board,